I think we're, I think we're okay. So why don't we move on to new business, which is therapy dogs, which I guess Mark, you should probably jump in and
Yeah.
initiate this conversation since I don't really know much about it.
Sure. So um, the district was approached by a member of our community who reached out to Amy Higgins at the high school, one of our counselors, and talked about the interest that we may have in possibly having a therapy dog join us as part of our educational program. We spent a lot of time this school year, certainly back in August and September, talking about social emotional learning needs of our students. And it's certainly not a once in a dawn when it comes to social emotional learning. This is something that is an ongoing concern for us at schools. And keeps popping up for us in unexpected ways and it's sometimes when we don't expect it. But we're trying our very best to meet the needs of students through lots of different ways. And so the idea of a therapy dog was one of the ways that was recently brought up. And apparently, we're not alone. Just a quick look around and I see that there's a number of districts in Massachusetts that are adding therapy dogs to their school districts. Some of the ones that I just saw recently were North Borough, Maynard, Tangham, Hanover, Norwood, Long Meadow, Concord, Middle Borough, and Berkshire Hills is also looking at a therapy dog club. So there's quite a few of them out there and it seems to be an idea that's getting a lot of of traction in the States and across the country. I know the state of Maryland just passed a legislation that would allow therapy dogs in all their schools. If a school district want them. And I've even seen things from all over English speaking countries around the globe, whether that's Australia or England or South Africa that have dogs helping kids in schools too. So it's kind of exciting opportunity for us, I think, to explore. And so we have some guests that would like to address the committee tonight to share what this might look like. And so I guess first we'll have well, the staff from the high school to speak to it. And then we also have Lee Kohlberger, who is the owner of Berkshire Poodles and Berkshire Dogs Unlimited, who has offered to donate potential therapy dogs to us, speak more about the program, the goals, and maybe a little bit more about the dogs themselves. So I'll invite Amy to Higgins to address us first. She'd sent me an email, kind of gauging my interest and support for her. And it was enthusiastic and we had a meeting recently to really talk to some of the details with all of our school admin and district leadership team to explore whether this was something that was worth pursuing further before we brought it to the school committee. So Amy, I'll invite you just to share a little bit about your ideas and your research surrounding the use of therapy dogs. And then we'll ask Lee to share with us kind of what he would like to, to offer to the school committee for his consideration.
Sure. So I'm excited to be able to talk about this opportunity. And then we have enthusiasm already. And then I got to leave. So I used to bring my dog to school with me in my counseling office when I worked at New Jersey. And I found that it was really beneficial. It was, I mean, kids automatically just, you know, they love animals. But what I found is just therapeutically, that the presence of the animal changed, you know, just the culture of my office. It made it a more approachable place. It lowered student's stress level immediately. It also gave students sometimes a reason to come in. So those that were a little intimidated at first, come in for counseling or for an appointment or were concerned about like the stigma of coming in, decided to go see the dog. But then what I found beyond that is students would come in my office and sit on the floor often and just while they were talking to me without even kind of planning it, would just be petting the dog while they were talking to me. I also found that a lot of faculty would do the same. And so I was thinking recently about, you know, there's a lot of research out there, you can Google it. But you know, the surgeon general just came out with the fact that, you know, youth mental health is a crisis right now in the country. And Masca, the Massachusetts School Counseling Association, just came out in the last week with an article about how, you know, schools are struggling to meet the need. And so I think we have to do it in more creative ways. And I think this is a creative way, but it also hits many parts. So it uplifts the community, the school culture. It helps students to feel, you know, there's a relationship that they can have with the dog that's non judgmental, that teaches compassion and empathy. And it's kind of a mirror of, you know, how to treat another living being. It lowers aggression. So I was telling Dr. Goslin that I had students in this previous experience that didn't have great relationships with peers or were even sort of aggressive. And around a dog, they were completely different. So it seemed to bring out some social emotional learning as well. And like I said, if you Google it, there's a lot of research, really specific research on this. It also impacts attendance in positive ways. So students that, you know, we're finding that every Monday is always a tough day for students to come back, particularly after grades, particularly after the years of COVID. So it gives students, you know, something positive to look forward to during the day. So I just think it's a great experience and I've seen in my own.
Thank you, Amy. And obviously, a trained comfort dog or therapy dog is different than just bring a dog to work program, right? Which we do see in some places of employment also. Not to say that those aren't great programs for what they are, but I think as schools, a different context. We want to think about them in a little different way. So and I think that the other benefit that I think is important to me is not just for the students. Because I know that they'll definitely benefit from it. I've seen when we bring dogs in and get to read to the dogs, what that did during reading intervention times. But also for our staff too. And I think, you know, sometimes we are quick to forget the psychological impact that this has had on some of our staff. And that some of them wrestle with their own anxiety with coming to work and then some of the trauma of living through a pandemic, as many of you in other sectors do. And so I think that having, you know, that comfort dog there certainly benefits the students, but also would be beneficial for our staff who also sometimes, you know, we have trouble with them coming to work on Mondays, right? And, you know, so I think it's a mutual benefit all the way around that would benefit our overall school culture and climate in both buildings. We have Lee joining us from Berkshire Dogs Unleashed and Berkshire Poodle League. What would you like to, I guess, share with the committee to help us? Have a better understanding of kind of what we would be looking at if we were to pursue this, this option?
Oh, and before you get started, I know at one of our earlier meetings, people felt that if the speakers were unmasked, that might help with the audio. So if you, if you want to do that, if you feel comfortable, okay. And speak on.
Yeah, back when we opened Berkshire Dogs Unleashed, I had this idea that we could donate. Prior to Berkshire Dogs Unleashed, I was a Pittsfield firefighter for 10 years. When I left the fire department to open Berkshire Dogs Unleashed, I had this thought of placing comfort dogs within local police and fire departments. That was my first thought because I knew there was a need there because I'd already done. We placed our first comfort dog with Pittsfield Police Officer Winston, maybe six months ago. And we just placed our second officer, Wendell, with Dalton Police. In our interaction with Dalton Police, we realized that they were going to use the dog more of a community outreach where Pittsfield is usually more as a comfort dog with their department. The idea started going that maybe schools had a need for this. And kind of all at the same time, Amy reached out that this is something she thought would be great for Lennox. Thinking about this two schools before we met with the admin last week, I was thinking about how great it would be to put one in each school. So the dog wasn't divided and then we could service the whole town. We came to the idea that we would offer two standard poodle puppies that qualified as service quality puppies through multiple different temperament testing to the town free of charge. That's from Berkshire Poodles. In addition, Berkshire Dogs Unleashed will cover all grooming, boarding, and training to get the dog to appropriate level to be in the school on a day to day basis. That being said, the eight 12 week old puppy is ready to serve a purpose within the community right away. You know, as just much as it's socialization for the dog, he's still a cute puppy that's going to serve the purpose. It's just going to be a little more work for the handler until we get the training done. Training in total is going to be about 24 to 28 weeks. And we should have that all completed by age of one for the dog. But that whole time, the dog is going to get to serve the purpose of the comfort dog for the town. In addition, Hilltown Veterinary Clinic has offered to cover all expenses for all working dogs in the county. And they're putting comfort dogs under the label of working dogs. So there's no vet expenses at all. The only expenses out there are going to be dog food, which is, we've calculated out to be about a $600 a year cost. And that's for now. Right now, we're in the process of getting a 501(c) under the name Berkshire Comfort Dogs with a hope that, you know, not every, it's only, not only, but it's $600. Not every town is going to want to spend that. We want to make it fair for everyone, even for the towns that don't have that $600 that we can cover the food as well. And by having the nonprofit, we'll be able to accomplish that hopefully by the start of the summer. Hilltown's, they're in Washington.
So the dog would be owned by the town. And so as such, it would be covered under our insurance policy. So we checked with Maya, and that is covered under our insurance policy as long as we own the dog. We have a waiting list of people at both schools who would love to board the dog.
You need it.
You like the foster family sort of that?
Yes, there is, there is no shortage of employees who say, sign me up, you know, the dog can live in my house. And that's kind of the concept. So the dog goes home with an employee, the same employee, but not like shared around. And then reports to work with that employee in the day and then the dog goes to work, right? And so at the high school, for example, it may work out of Amy's office. And that would be kind of the program by design to be, our staff would, would house the dog. Basically, everything would be provided other than the food, which Melissa and I had also talked about. And there's some room in the budget to do that. And it certainly falls under the auspices of mental health services and social emotional learning. So, you know, even that cost could be easily absorbed right now under some of our grants that exist. Anything else that I'm missing, Melissa, on our discussions?
No, no, you know, the key is that the district or the town owns the dog. And then it's covered under our policy.
Yeah, Lee.
One of the things that we had talked about was there being handler A, which is the main handler that takes a dog home every night. And then a backup handler, handler B. God forbid, handler A, you know, needs knee surgery, is going to miss 12 weeks of work for whatever reason. The dog still needs to be present at school. Whether handler B picks the dog up every morning, drops a dog back off, or handler B keeps it for 12 months, the dog is still going to be present within the school. So there's going to be a backup support system.
And these handlers are already committed to not only housing the dog, but also going to weekly training with the dog for two puppy courses and then for advanced training for the comfort dog training.
So let me see if I got this straight. The handlers are different from the teachers who will be taking the dogs home? Or are the teachers, the handlers, all, what?
It could be a combination thereof. Really could be different at the two schools. It's different at the two police departments. In Pittsfield, Chief Winn and Officer Derby have shared custody of Winston. In Pittsfield, Officer Miller takes Officer Wendell home every night. And Chief Stroud is the backup. He spends a lot of time with Chief Stroud during the day because Officer Miller is still on parole, parole patrol.
Clarence got that one down. Don't worry. One page story.
Could you talk a little bit about the training involved? I understand there are different levels of training for therapy dogs.
So the first six week course is your basic puppy, mostly socialization. Your second class is an advanced puppy class where you're really focusing on your basic commands, sit, stay, down, off leash stuff, coming when you're called. And then in between that timeframe, it's, it's important that the puppy is in school every day and going everywhere to handler. Because socialization that the comfort dog will hold is really the most important thing. When around the puppies are nine months old, they'll have instruction from us for things to be working on. They don't really need to attend the class. It'll be more be myself or my trainer Lindsay following up with them, making sure everything's at bar. Then they'll enter a 12 week K-Negged Citizen, K-Negged Citizen is an advanced in K-Negged Citizen Urban, which is through the American Kennel Club. And once they check all those three titles, they'll be ready to do their comfort dog. The difference between a comfort dog and an actual service dog is that that one year mark, the service dog would be taken and given to a trainer to learn a task, whether it's a balance, opening doors, you know, guiding dogs even further than that, but it's along the same line. Those one year old dogs that have completed that are ready to be comfort dogs. The socialization they receive is going to get them there anyway. The titles is just because it's what's best for the dog in the bonding creates with the handler that we're forcing the handler of the dog to create, even though they're really doing it on their own. That's just the extra racing on the case.
So we're asking the school committee to consider the, the ability of Lennox to implement a comfort dog program in both of our schools pursuant to a policy that we would draft up if we have the support of the committee. Like I said, there are a number of other districts where we can certainly look out and see what kind of language already exists. Build on that for our needs. But that's the, the request tonight from the folks that came to offer the presentation.
I, I for one, just want to say thank you for that. And I know that the poodle doodle world, because I have two of them. You know, because we have allergies in our house, we can't have dogs that, you know, shed and it just creates a whole other situation. So I think having dogs that can be okay for kids with allergies and have them to be present. And they're very, very smart and loving dogs. And I think, you know, the opportunity for kids to engage emotionally is in the dimension that Amy had about the ways in which it opens doors for students to feel like they can come in and have a moment. It's just wonderful. And I think, I mean, we'll, we'll vote, but I'm, I'm very much supportive and very grateful because I do hear all the effort that goes into this. And it is your training and it's your profession, but you're also offering it for free, which I really appreciate. Because I also know that these dogs are right now very much in high demand and they're not inexpensive. And it's the way you make your living. And it's really important that we respect and honor that. So thank you. It was very generous. And if we decide to do it, I really think it's a great opportunity in any ways in which, you know, people can engage in a way that feels like you're making connections and getting comfort is great.
Yeah, I want to echo that too. Thank you. You know, I just happened, you know, randomly to be looking through the paper today and just saw the prices of some dogs. And I know this is a, this is a major, major commitment. And, you know, Dr. Goslin's dog was, has been in the office off and on, I guess. I saw it one day and I'll tell you, captivating, you know, just amazing, you know. So I can totally see, I mean, I think that everyone's going to want to be at your office. I mean, that might be a problem. I don't know where the dog would be at Mars, but yeah, it's, you know, it's definitely an interesting concept and, you know, go for it. The Minneapolis airport had a comfort dog. We'd wander around the airport, you know. I think we, I think, yes, I think.
Just to get a sense of support.
Yep.
Well, I'll move, I'll, I'll move that we support the plan to move forward with creating a policy for implementing a comfort dog program and that we do so with gratitude for all the work and energy that's going to go into making it happen. So that's motion to support it because we don't have a, you've got to go forward with the policy knowing that we're agreeing to it, right?
I'll second the motion.
Anybody have further discussion, further questions?
I guess this is probably the kind of ask, I think the comfort dogs sound terrific. And thank you for helping us with this. I guess it's been close to two months since we first heard from the vice principal about all of the social challenges going on. I am curious what else we've done and have we been able to bring on additional staff or hours to, to support kids further in that way as well?
So we have, we actually have been interviewing school adjustment counselors. We're currently in negotiations with a great individual. We'd love to bring on board at the high school as additional school adjustment counselor there. Also, two building subs have been posted. Job was offered to the, and accepted by the candidate at Morris and the high school is wrapping up their interviewing as well. So we are adding additional supports in that way. But then there's also some soft supports and I was going to touch into some of the highlights, but I think we can probably do it now. In terms of, I think, giving students some opportunity to have voice, to work with faculty, to design things that help bring joy to kids. So one was a homecoming dance. Recently, a group of students said, we have student council and that represents a certain group of students for sure. But there's some other of us who also want to get involved in other ways. Can we create a Lennox Social Club to help foster morale and school spirit at the building? They note the administration, they may have a proposal, the administration said, this sounds great, guys, like, what can we do to support you and run this, run with this? And so therefore, they're planning their very first event, which is a dodgeball tournament that will be held on the 23rd of December. So that's another way to, I think, support students' emotion, social emotional growth is giving them some outlets for fun and to kind of engage with one another in collective, you know, community bonding events outside of just academics in sports and music and drama and the typical thing. So, you know, that's, I think, one of the ways that some of those things are starting to take place. Also, this school planned a spirit week that was a big success at the high school. Morris has a spirit week coming up next week. So there's lots of things that are happening to try to work on enhancing the culture and climate of the buildings. I would also say the invigoration of school councils is something that would also help support that. We also had a coffee and conversation event at the high school that was vigorously attended for a secondary school, which was really great to see. Those parents said, hey, how can we also get involved to support the SEL of our students? And so tomorrow, they actually have a surprise pop up hot chocolate event for the students at all three lunches at the high school. So they've committed to doing some random acts of kindness for the staff and for students to help also, I think, bring more joy into the school. And so those are some of the things that are in place. We certainly have our regular counseling services. And then we have a team that meets at both schools every week to talk about student cases and make sure that we're linking up students with support. In fact, I was just over at the high school this morning, working with a team to help support one of our students who's undergoing a difficult time in life right now. So there's a lot that goes on to support that. And we've also funneled some more resources as well to try to support that based on, you know, I think the gracious offer for the committee to pursue that early on in the year. We're still working on it. I, I know it's probably not as fast as everyone would wish. Unfortunately, the hiring process just takes a while between the posting, the interviewing, you know, offer and acceptance and all that. But, you know, those things are certainly in progress. And we're wrapping up two out of those three hires already.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
That was at the home varsity soccer games. I don't know if you had, had the opportunity, but you know, after the JV had played and the varsity was playing, there were, it was just like kids just showed up. And they were playing all, all over the, all over the field. It was really, really great. It was just all different ages and, and to talk about sort of an impromptu social atmosphere, it was phenomenal. You know, unfortunately, the weather sucks in, it's hard to translate that. But, man, you know, kids who didn't play soccer were looking to go to the soccer games, not only to watch it for their friends, but also to be able to hang out with their friends afterwards or during the game.
Yeah, and I saw kids playing like some pickup soccer matches on the next field, also throwing footballs around and frisbees around. And so like everyone found something that, just hanging out and talking or even petting, you know, the superintendent's dog. Everyone found something that brought them some joy.
So let me bring it back to therapy dogs.
Yeah.
So that we could actually maybe have a vote.
Yeah.
And then, you know, but thank you for the update on, on all of that.
Sure.
And, and bringing it up because it's, that's really what it's all about. Any further questions or comments on comfort dogs? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion?
Why? I was only going to say, can a puppy come to school committee? That's what I was going to say, but that wasn't part of the vote.
Hey, we own them. You can come. We work for us, right? All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, guys. You can go on with your lives.
You can join us by Zoom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. So I did talk about some of the highlights and recognitions. There's a few more to mention. We have a number of our music students who achieved some pretty significant accomplishments toward the tail end of our fall semester. And we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to share their accomplishments with our broader school community. So the following students were accepted into the Massachusetts Music Educates Association Weston District Senior Festival, which they had to audition for. And I guess the addition process is pretty brisk. And so we had some students who went through that process and were selected. So PJ Feagle was selected for the concert band. Piper Maximilian was selected for chorus, as was Genevieve Collins. Finn Jolly also was selected for the chorus. And Juan Enrique was selected for the orchestra. And so their audition scores were all high enough to qualify them to also audition for the Allstate Festival. So we're really proud of the accomplishments of our performing arts department and our music department. I know sometimes, you know, it seems like we're lauding our athletes, but we also have other students who are doing great things in the arts as well. So we're happy to celebrate that. Also, just, you know, on another note, in terms of highlights and recognitions, I want to recognize our staff for really going above and beyond and rising to the occasion. Recently, the community center had to close due to a staffing shortage. And Chris Ketchin and I met, we said, we want to make sure that this never happens again. And what are some creative outside of the box solutions? And literally everything was on the table, like, hey, do we have to like reach out to the, the police and the fire and ask them to pitch in? I said, well, you know, I think we have some pretty good experience with working with kids over in the school department. I think we can pitch in here. And maybe, you know, we can get some teachers to volunteer to, to join a list to help out and serve as those who are on call if we have a shortage again. And so we put out a, a call to our staff. We had over 30 staff members sign up, which I think again is really telling to us in terms of the culture and climate that we're seeking to try to cultivate, where we want people to get back involved and give back in, in ways, both in work and the community. And so I was just really pleased to see our teachers go above and beyond that call. And it wasn't just teachers, but support staff. We open to any district employee. We had folks even from food services saying, hey, if you need me, you know, I can come over. So, you know, I think that was just wonderful to hear that these folks were willing to do whatever it took to make sure that we can keep the community center running. I think that's a vital service for many of our families, many of our working families, who, when you have an unexpected childcare disruption, it is pretty tough on working families. I'm speaking from experience. That's my life. So, you know, we're really proud of our staff that they stepped up for that. So that's just another.
That's great.
Highlight and recognition as well. And also, like I said, for creating more space for student voice, I'm really excited to hear that we're giving the students that forum and that agency in our schools to, to have more say in what happens in schools and to have open communications with administration to co-plan events that are just, just the kids. So then the next item on the superintendent's report tonight is a safety update. And I felt like with some of the, the recent school safety events around the country, particularly in Oxford, that we wanted to make sure that we took some time to share some of the things that we've been working on this year to enhance safety. These are things that we don't always share publicly because we don't want people by design to know much of our plans. But we do want people to know that we are planning, right? And so I've invited some of our law enforcement representatives here, Chief O'Brien, and our school resource officer, Billy Colvin, to speak with some of the trainings that have gone on with our staff and some of the ways that we've enhanced our preparedness even before this. So this, this, don't mistake this. I think this is a reactionary. So this, this, don't mistake this, I think this is a reactionary, you know, knee jerk reaction. We were doing this from beginning of the school year, in, in some cases, even before the school year even started, to look around with fresh set of eyes and do a safety reset, as we like to call it, so that we could be out there ready to support our kids as they return to, to in-school learning. So Chief, Billy, I'm not sure, you know, who wants to address the, the school committee to share, but, or both, but floor is yours.
Yeah, I would say that we work in conjunction with Trooper Andy Kanata of the Massachusetts State Police, who's done tremendous work with, with our safety team in both schools. But I will allow Officer Colvin to tell you what we have going on, some of what we have going on right now.
Thank you very much. So prior to COVID, our school safety training at both schools, Moore School and Lennox Middle High School, we're progressing at both schools. Moore School, we're a little ahead of high school, middle school, but for no bad reason or whatever. And we were getting to good points as far as doing drills on a regular consistent basis. There, there were announced drills, so everybody was, you know, understood, especially to younger kids. So they weren't, you know, made to be scared or nervous or whatever. And we were in a good spot. Then, you know, obviously COVID set in, so that kind of put us back a little bit, just for basically not really being in the schools for almost two years with, you know, with a consistent manner. But knowing that school safety is obviously very important and the schools will recognize it, Principal Kelly, Principal Knibl, Vice Principal, Assistant Principal Betty, and all you folks, we're trying to get right back into it this year and we let off with, we went to meetings, Trooper Kanata and myself at both the middle high school with all staff, just kind of put out again to everybody what to expect in the future. We answered some questions. We also toured rooms, we had teachers who were interested in having us look at their classrooms and giving them advice, how they can properly make sure they're locked down safely, things they can put in place to help keep them and their children, their students safe. So we met with several teachers, same thing down in Moore School, we had a meeting down there, which is really well attended. And again, same thing down there, we answered a bunch of questions, we went to several classrooms and tried to give suggestions. Some of the, you know, with the way the buildings are made years ago, it does make it difficult for some classrooms because of shapes and the set and the other. But where there's a will, there's a way. Trooper Kanata doing this all over Western Mass, he's part of a, a team from the state police for school safety. You know, he had a bunch of tricks up his sleeve too for ideas what to do, you know. So we do have, we've had place, plans in place for a long time. Some of the stuff, obviously because of logistics and also though for security reasons, we can't speak about, you know, like, you know, areas where we were rallying and we had to go back to things like that. We're always updating that. We have go bags at the schools that we've been working on, have proper items in there that we need, attendance records, things like that. We've really updated the schools and, and when I say we, I said the school department. With radio equipment, Moore Schools has a full complement of radios, I think, for pretty much everybody, right? If I'm correct, and the high school is also very close. And also, we've talked about upgrading our radio communication down there too. Right now, at the high school and middle school, every, every person that we deem to be a crucial kind of person initially, we want to make sure in communication has a radio, they're very good with carrying them. PE staff, we consider important because they're outside sometimes and, you know, we need to be able to communicate quickly with them. They carry, we got these new radios that are really great for the teachers, are smaller, lighter, they work very well. And their staff's been very good with keeping them with them at all times. So in our future, what we're planning on is we have been actively talking about actually having a drill after the, after the break, after Christmas and, and New Year's break. We're just trying to come up with a date that works for each of the schools because, you know, also for us, we want to do these drills, they're important. But we also want to try to make little, as little disruption for our students as we can do also. Because we know that, you know, they only get so much time during the day to academically do what they need to do. So we're just trying to make it work logistically and, and, you know, so hopefully shortly after the break, we'll be having a drill, a being announced drill. So everybody will know in advance, sort of as comfortable, that, that way if there's any questions, they can ask questions in advance, you know. Thinking, okay, what should I do here, I'm kind of forgetting or whatever. And then hopefully, not too far downward after that, we'll follow through with actually a, a hands-on drill where it's not announced, where we, you know, we'll announce it at the moment and then have, have staff go into place and do a lockdown with their students and then we'll go through and check. Just to let you guys know, and for parents out there, we don't do any role-playing. That's not, that's not a, a good thing to do. So there's no role-playing, there's nothing like that. All this, we have people just practice what they're taught, how to properly secure the rooms. The rooms are pretty much all locked anyways because it's one of the things, it's all doors, should be locked at all times anyways. It's one less thing for staff to have to think about and worry about. So, but there is, what we do is then after the announcement, then we go around, we check everything to make sure everything's away. Should be, we key in, announce, please, and we key into the drills. And, you know, applaud the students for doing a good job and the teachers. And then, you know, we tell them, once we finish in a few minutes, we'll be announced, they can go back to wherever learning day. And that's kind of about it and we've been very successful so far. We've gone, we've gone to Richmond many times to help with them. I've gone to Great Barrington to help Officer Braden from Great Barrington, police down there do drills. So they were really going to before it happened with COVID in the right direction. And, you know, I've helped with some other school districts, different areas where it's been available, they've helped us. So it's, you know, it's been worked out well. You know, like, one of the biggest things we, we put out recently, a tragedy in Oxford, you know, brought it up, we put out in both schools, were very good. I sent them a, a kind of a letter or whatever email for the principals to read and inform the staff if they felt appropriate or whatever. But we just reiterate some things about, you know, if you, if you hear something, if you see something, bring it up. We'd rather look into something and totally deem it to be a non-threat than to miss something, you know, and have it maybe be a problem. You know, so that's something we put out and I think staff are very good at, staff's come forward and know, I'm predominantly down for the high school. But we've had many times where staff members come forward with information and it may have nothing to do with a threat, it may be something we need to know outside the school that's going to go on with extracurricular activity or something. So a lot of the staff are very good at, if they hear something right away, bring it to the attention of, you know, the principal, vice principal. And then I'm a quick call away, as is Chief O'Brien, whoever's on, I do.
We would encourage, and we're lucky in Lennox because we've had a couple incidents even this year where we had to spring into action to make sure whatever was being said was not going to happen at all. And we were able to take care of that virtually immediately. But the parents have to know that they can call the school system, Mike Knibl or Brett Betty or the Moore Schools well and get that word out because they have a constant connection with us when something like this occurs. It's nothing that could be sat on, can't wait. If you've got a funky feeling about something somebody said or posted, take a screenshot of it, get it to somebody. You could go directly to the police department if you want, which is fine. Oftentimes, people feel a little more comfortable going through the school system, which is fine. We have a direct line of communication with the, with the heads of both schools. So we can't, we can't encourage that enough. And like I said, we've used a couple times this year already. Thankfully, it turned out to be good.
And we do have, still in place, the anonymous alerts app, both students but also parent reviews. And we have had a couple times this school year that it's been used. You know, and it's something we get, I'm in, I'm in the loop with that, I mean, we get to my phone, the principals do, the vice principal, and I believe Dr. Gosling and others get it. And then, you know, we start calling right away. We had one on a Sunday night, you remember, about eight o'clock at night, and then we got the phone with Principal Knibl and we luckily, it was just a bad misunderstanding, but somebody had posted. But we ruled it out right away, but that system is there in place for people to use too. As long, you know, that always use the right context.
Well, you know, I, I can say, having been a school administrator here, how much we appreciate the communication. Billy, you've been, you've been at the high school for years, I don't.
Twenty years now.
Twenty years now. You know, and, and, you know, you've had kids go through and Steve's got kids going through and, you know, we, we have five, six hundred, seven hundred kids that, you know, we, every day, we appreciate the attention that you are paying with the administration to the safety of our kids.
That's appreciated.
You know, you're doing the trainings, the diligence, the, the anonymous alert ability, ability to, you know, connect to that immediately.
You know, to, to the school's credit and, you know, Brenda, I mean, you've been three years, four years now?
Two.
Principal Knibl's been there like ten years and, and, you know, Brett Betty's pretty much ran the two, six months or whatever. But the schools, the administration at the schools are very proactive and, you know, it just, we're just a call away, you know. But they're, you know, they're always very vigilant and stuff, watching them. And they, if it gets them and they think there's something, their spidey senses are, are raised, we're made aware of it right away, whether it's something we need to involve or not. But we always try to keep everybody in the same group.
Yeah, I think the communication that you've got going with, is great, you know, and, and was, would be really helpful and, well, we hope it won't necessarily be helpful, but just what you're doing proactively on these calls that may come in, following up on situations, as Steve, you mentioned, you've had a couple already this year. It's, 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 you know, it's heartening to know that.
It doesn't matter how big or small your district is, anything unfortunate can happen in place.
Exactly.
And there's some other good ideas that, you know, Dr. Gosling's brought to the plate with, you know, key, new key system, different things, more cameras. So it's all positive, you know, it costs money in the worst, you know, so that's kind of a tough thing. But they're all positive ideas of working together, you know, I think we, we can make things even better than what it is right now.
Yeah, I agree with Bob's comments and, you know, this, these topics aren't easy for anyone to talk about, right? It's uncomfortable for, for us all to think of this as a reality, but this is kind of the world that we live in nowadays. And I think, you know, I can speak for the committee that we're very appreciative to have such a committed and involved SRO that's really not always the case in a lot of towns. So we're very appreciative and thank you.
No, thank you. Now for the support of the school and then all the current school committee and the past school committees, it won't happen either. So on the police chiefs, between Chief O'Brien, Chief H, Chief Burkle, that's all, Chief Burkle's the one who initially put me in as an SRO when I first got the academy.
Can I just ask a question that may, because I appreciate, Billy, you mentioning about the concept of sort of this role-playing thing, which I think there's sort of been a lot of social media around that. And I think you could look at one of those posts and already know why that is just not the right way to go. And so thank you for that because I was thinking about, it's, you know, it is of course so incredibly important for children to know what to do and to be prepared. And at the same time, you know, how are we engaging in conversation? I mean, it goes under the social emotional, right? We, we have kids that are already at a very heightened anxiety level about so many different things. And now, you know, we're having these, these conversations. And so it's sort of that, it's just, you know, I mean, it's like, you have to talk about it to make sure people are safe. And then, like, when you do talk about it, sometimes you're heightening the fears of, oh my God, this is gonna happen. And then the access to video, you know, every, every, even every kid now walks around and they can see things. I just really sometimes think about that multi-sensory way in which we're adding sort of to the trauma. And at the same time, of course, we have to be prepared for, you know, if an event happens, you have to know what to do or people aren't going to be safe. And I appreciate that, I'm just.
And that's been part of the conversation since day one, you know. And Trooper Kanata has been involved in those conversations as well. But we've said that, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're not intentionally inflicting trauma on kids, right? We want to make them feel safe and secure in schools, let them know that, you know, they are safe here. But without doing drills in a way that would cause kids to worry or anxiety, right? I have young kids too and I know what that's like and I have things that they tell me. So I also am an Alice trainer, so I've been through some of these trainings. And I think there's good things to borrow from them, but there's also places where we have to push back and say, you know what? My educator sense and my parental sense tells me this might not be the most, you know, appropriate way to do this with kids, you know, in schools. And so we've had some deep conversations around this with our team and, and I think we're all on the same page in terms of how to do those things. And again, I think it's already been iterated, but, you know, we want to make sure that we're looking at a multi-layered strategy with, with preventative techniques and measures that are in place, both physical and non-physical, but also, and by physical, I mean like the buildings themselves and, and those types of features. But then also the communication. And I think that that can't be underscored and the chief and I actually just emailed about this today, that, you know, that open line of communication is crucial. I think in Oxford, if there's a, unfortunately, there's always a lesson in all these for us, right? But in Oxford, I think it's, that was a breakdown of communication. And if that chain of communication maybe had been dealt with in a slightly different way, you know, the outcome may have been different. And that's something that we follow through on everything, no matter how silly it might seem, because we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that we can rule out anything. And so we're in communication, but we can do better and we're gonna continue to, to meet and respond to this. And so I already reached out to the chief and said, hey, there's a couple of points that we got from Mike Long, who's one of the great school attorneys in the state, that had some suggestions for schools. And I said, we're doing a lot of these things, but like, let's get together with our leadership team and, and go through a couple of other ones because we always want to make sure that, you know, we're staying on the, the cutting edge of this thing. And so again, I'm so grateful for our law enforcement partners, coming from a law enforcement family myself, this is near and dear to my heart. But it's, it's something that I think we take seriously and I think we do a really good job. And for a small force in a small district, I was pretty impressed with the, the knowledge sophistication that was already in place. And then we're just building on that, making it even better. So, but again, the same time balancing and making sure that kids feel safe and that our community feels safe. You know, but it's, it's a, it's a delicate balance of getting that right, but we're really trying hard to do it.
People need to hear the thoughts probably more often that they're not bothering us with what they think might be a trivial post or something. Let us, let us figure that out, the school and the police department, we will figure out what that meant and, and do what we have to do at that time to be sure that the kids are safe. So if, if you see these posts, you got, you have to let somebody know.
Even if it's a hoax or a challenge or a meme or whatever, let us know, you know. Sometimes we can just say, hey, and, and we also try to communicate that out these days, I think, in ways we never did in the past. So there was one earlier in the year and, and again, we were open in our social media and through our email systems saying, hey, we know about this thing you might be hearing about, it's a hoax, we've already looked into it. But we want to make sure that, for the parents to know, one, that yes, we know about these things, yes, we're addressing them, we're figuring out what they are and what's the level of, of concern. And if it's none, I want you to have peace of mind of saying, ah, good. If not, we're gonna let you know that, yes, we're still working on this thing and here's our plan. But, you know, again, we, we pursue all of these things. So please make sure that you report them to either the police station or, or school so that we can work on them.
I, I, I would just a quick comment or observation or concern. It touches a little bit on exchange, the, the question that, that Mr. Cass asked and, and the, the difficulty we are, we are having gain, getting support, you know, for, you know, supporting students, supporting faculty, whichever it is. You know, these gentlemen have taken a very proactive approach. And, and the, the other side of it is when someone is identified as needing help. And, and one thing that struck me in the recent tragedy was the instruction of go find assistance within forty-eight hours. And my feeling is, who knows where to go and, and to do what? And, and I, and I'm wondering if through our own resources, we could not, or perhaps there does exist, a, you know, kind of a, a, some on retainer or someone where, hey, we can pick up the phone and say, we, this is the other half of it that we need to be proactive about. Because, you know, my understanding, I think there's a recent article in the Eagle regarding some of the length of time it takes kids to even get in to, to see someone or talk to someone. And, you know, I, I, I don't know what the procedure was in, in Oxford if that forty-eight hour mark wasn't it. But that's the crucial time when someone has to get in and, and, and talk to someone. And if someone has to wait or, or, and, and even giving people a list isn't enough, you know. Whether the people are, whether a phone call we returned or everyone's inundated, I, I just feel that perhaps there's an opportunity for us to take a proactive stance on, on that side of support.
And it's a shame that Amy Higgins left because that was part of one of our conversations this morning, actually, in, for the support students. But I think the difference between Oxford and here is we wouldn't put the onus on the parents, say, you must do something in, in forty-eight hours. If there's an imminent mental health crisis, we have a county crisis unit that will respond to that within, you know, hours, but probably even less, maybe more like minutes, right? And in the meantime, we would also have plans in our place to keep that child safe until those folks arrived. But I think we would not have that type of approach. So we're fortunate that we do have those services. I, I don't know any about Oxford or what was available and not available or how that was communicated or not. But I, I can speak to our context and that, that those people would be. But I, I can speak to our context and that those people would be directly plugged in. And yes, like everywhere else around the country, everywhere around the state, um, there are a massive backlog in mental health services and trying to get help and counseling and those types of things. But if it is a crisis, they will respond, um, immediately. Um, because, you know, the number one thing is to minimize, uh, loss of life, right? And so like, that's our number one priority at all costs. And so if there's a, a concern about student well-being, um, you know, they're saying that they're not feeling well and they're thinking about harming themselves or others, crisis is going to open right away. So we have that and that, and we have a, an amazing counseling staff and we would also work with our law enforcement partners. And that, I think this is can't be underscored enough. And I understand the politics of some of this and all the, you know, what we hear in the media and back and forth, but I think this is the real strength of having an SRO in our schools. Um, Billy's very responsive. He's got his, you know, fingers squarely on the pulse of the building, knows the kids, talking to the kids. He's hearing the scuttlebutt, you know, and so that's a huge benefit that we also have, like right in our own, you know, school that we have, uh, the SRO. And we've worked very closely on a number of student cases to make sure, hey, if we really need to go in that direction, we were ready to go. Um, so, um, you know, we, we do the very best that we can. I don't know that having anyone on retainer would give us any extra rigility, um, based on we're handling the cases. I think crisis is our very best go-to. Um, and if not, working with our law enforcement, which luckily we have one like right on the scene, um, to neutralize, um, and continue those things. But also, it's not always a, um, something that needs a, a, a police response, right? But we have a, a great counseling program too, that also works to support kids. And we have to think about this kind of in, in both of those ways. Like there are times we have to intervene and there are times where we have to, you know, nurture and support. And so, uh, they do a really good job, I think, of having many hours of conversation devoted to that. I was in one this morning for two hours. And when you have over ten adults sitting at a table talking about one child, but that might be the time, that's pretty powerful. Um, you know, in terms of folks who really want care and really making sure we get, um, the services in place for those kids and working with their families and the community agencies to get those things in place.
We have had situations before where there's been a student in crisis and it's been dealt with immediately. We've involved Green Center, the Person at the Health, and we've had it all where they responded, uh, to the school to assist at the school and to evaluate and to determine what this, what's in the best, you know, uh, best in nature for that student at the time with parents involved and at times too where we, with the parent who brought kids to the hospital. So we, I mean, we have utilized that, we don't just let them linger out for twenty-four, forty-eight hours, because you can't do that, needs to be addressed. You know, right away, whether it's, you know, our, our kids at our schools or adults in our community in a way. So it's something we take seriously and we don't, you know, it's immediate actions taken, appropriate, you know, action to help them.
Do, do we? I, I know that you guys within the school, um, you know, immediately react. Do we have a, a fairly quick response from the crisis, the outside crisis people?
They've been pretty good in the past, especially when it involves our students.
Okay.
You know, they, they, and Amy Higgins has a great rapport with them. Um, you know, and so, you know, we don't, we had a situation where she would call right away and they were in room. And then we opted because parents are there to go, driven to them instead. But so we've had a very, as far as it goes, especially with, with students, with younger people that are crisis. The, uh, crisis team, you know, for the, the personal medical center and for the green center have been very receptive and very responsive.
Good.
Yeah, I think our special ed team has done a really good job too of writing, you know, good IEPs, um, for some of these folks too, to try to make sure that we're also plugging them into services too. So, you know, there's a lot of, I think, layers in this, you know, that we, we try to, to bring all the resources we can, um, into play. Um, you know, and and I think the other thing, you know, they, in the letter that, uh, the chief and I got from Mike Long, um, the attorney, the, the last bullet point is really don't do nothing, like act, right? And so even if that means taking someone's protective custody for their own, you know, good or searching a, a backpack, we'll deal with all the legal stuff later, but you know, we have to act and we have to make sure that, you know, we're doing what's in the best interest of safety and and doing the right thing to, um, to keep everybody safe and healthy in school. So, uh, we're prepared, you know, also to do that, right? Um, and again, sometimes, you know, those are decisions you have to make, you know, in the heat of the moment and do the best that you possibly can, given the context. And that's, uh, and we've had a lot of conversations with our staff and we continue to have those conversations about, you know, how to handle these things and what we do. Um, and I'd love, you know, as we move forward in the year, to also to have a couple of tabletop exercises where we can really kind of work through all the what ifs, uh, and and kind of pressure test our system and make sure that, uh, we have the things in place we need to.
Thank you.
All right. And next, another superintendent's report, uh, I've asked Melissa Falkowski, our assistant superintendent for business and operations to, um, continue to keep us, um, apprised of the, um, the budget, both the current budget and, um, the budget development process for the next year's school budget. So Melissa's put together a very brief presentation, um, and I'm not sure who has the screen sharing rights to to share that. And then Melissa will walk us through, um, the current fiscal health of the district for this current, um, operating year. And then give us a kind of a preview of where we are as we build toward next year's budget as well.
Okay, so, um, I did share with you a full, um, spreadsheet breakdown, one by one, depending on, uh, budgeted amounts, um, special revenues that may have been applied. Expended amounts, those are money off the door, already paid and encumbrances, which are um, money set aside for invoices yet to come. Um, and then the percentages for each. So, um, when you're dealing with the, a school year budget, we have staff who start at varying times during the year. So we have full year staff that work full year and are paid twenty-six pays over the course of the year. We have school year staff that are paid twenty-six pays over the year. And then we have school year staff that are being lower, twenty-one days. So each one of those groupings of personnel has a different, um, percentage of where they need to be at this point in time to be, um, in good shape. So for year, it would be at forty-six point fifteen percent for all payrolls. I'm only talking salaries. The school year twenty-six pays are at twenty-six point nine-two percent. And that's a way to manage what accounts may or may not be in line. So if you are around those percentages above or below, you know, they have excess, a little bit of excess funding if you're below. A little bit more if you're above and figure out why we're above. So that's step number one in evaluating the, um, current year budget and, um, the salaries are a pretty portion of it. So I'm going to go through this, um, brief presentation to, to give you an overview of where we are with this year's budget. So last, this year's budget has a, the budget total was twelve million, nine twenty-four, one four. That's the amount that we sold at town meeting that is exclusive, does not include insurance benefits.
Recording in progress.
I was trying to see what you were doing with, yeah, I forgot it.
Do you have it? And so then the, um, once we have the budget total, we apply special revenues. Those revenues include school choice, they include, um, tuition payments. Pre-K tuition payments, some athletics, um, food services are not part of this budget, but I, I did include that on the last slide of this. So we reduce the budget by the amount of special revenue that we apply and it gives us a net budget. This year's net budget is ten million, nine thirty-eight, seven seventeen. And where does that put us at this point? So our budget was twelve million, we've expended and incurred four point four million, all funds. And remaining is six, eight point four million, almost eight point five million, which is thirty-four percent expended and incurred and sixty-five percent and some sixty-five point seven-two still available at this point in time. Which is really where it should be. This graph shows you simply that we have this full budget and we've expended roughly about a third of the budget um, through December third. The expenditures are also broken down by program area. We have Morris, we have O N H S, we have student services, operations and maintenance, administration, and then the reserve or contingency, contractual type funding that we keep, um, for emergencies and, um, other obligations. So this graph here shows you that each of the schools, O N H S's budget, the light blue is their total budget for the year. All revenue. So their budget is at five point eight six nine million. Um, to date, they have expended and incurred one point seven five two million, which is twenty-nine point eight five percent. Morris's budget is two point eight two three million. They've extended eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which is thirty point four four percent. All very good percentages and, um, expenditures and encumbrances are, are where they should be. Nothing is, is over at this point. Individual lines maybe, but not the full budget. Um, student services has a budget of two point one nine seven. They have expended and incurred seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand or thirty-three percent. Operations and maintenance has a, a little over a million dollar budget. They've expended and incurred six hundred and five thousand, which is fifty-six point oh four percent. Now, the buildings operate twelve months, twelve months of the year. We have July and August where the buildings are still operated, even though there's not staff and students full-time there. We do have programs during the summer. So that's why you see that jump a little bit more where it's fifty-six percent, because it really is half the way that we've been using that budget. Um, administration again is at sixty-four point two-three percent higher than the schools, but we also operate twelve months during the year. Now that is, um, a little bit higher than fifty percent because a lot of our expenditures are due in the beginning. We have, um, encumbered, um, monies for transportation, we've encumbered monies for, uh, software licenses that come out of the administration fund. So you see that that's a little bit higher, but a lot of the, the purchase orders are put through to save the money. So that's why it looks like it's, it's a little bit higher than it should be. But that's due to the encumbrances. And then the reserve and contingency fund, we have, um, redeployed sixty-eight thousand of it of the two hundred thousand that we had put aside. Um, that leaves about a hundred and thirty-three thousand remaining in that fund. So all of these program areas are in good shape and the, the budget really is trending as it should at this point. There are a few salary lines, um, that we will require, that we require, um, a transfer in influx of funding from another account. Um, as I said at the beginning, we have full year pays, twenty-six pays, staff, we see should be at forty-six point one-five percent of their salaries at this point. So when you look at this, this shared, um, spreadsheet that I've given you, you'll notice that there is a column that says salary percentage expended expected. And you'll see that the forty-six point one-five is, um, throughout most of the, um, fifty-two week employees, you'll see twenty-six nine-two for the professional staff, thirty-three point three-three for school year. That's the levels that they should be at. Some are above, some are lower. The net effect of the pluses and minuses though is there is a bit of, there is a bit of excess, a little bit of excess in the salary lines. Um, some of the exceptions to this are, there was a new position for, that was created. Um, the registrar retired last year and we created the register slash data manager position. Um, so that line item will require a transfer of approximately nine to ten thousand dollars. Um, the salary was revised and as the position was revised to encompass all state recording. Student services support salary accounts, um, are also a bit over. And this isn't unusual. We have students that come in that may need to have one lease than what was anticipated when the budget was put together. At this point, I'm estimating a transfer of about fourteen thousand dollars for a reallocation to other revenue sources, special like as grants has, um, circuit breaker reimbursement, but I anticipate about fourteen thousand in the, those account lines to have to be covered. And our substitute, um, lines are, will be over at the end of the year by the estimated amount. This is estimated of about sixteen thousand based on where we are right now. A couple of reasons for this is, um, we revised the substitute rates after the budget was approved. So that's part of it. And we also have, um, a long-term sub in for one position of a teacher that left. And that comes out of this sub-line. But when we get near the end of the year, we'll transfer funds to cover those costs from the salary that we saved from the teacher. So it's just, uh, that would be a journal ledger that would cover most of that. But the, I, I think that we are trending as we have been in the past. It's just that we raise the rate, so we're spending more money. Some of the expense lines, um, many are where they need to be, some are at a hundred percent for expenditures and encumbrances. Um, and that's because of the timing of when purchases are needed. Supplies are usually purchased at the beginning of the year. Dudes, professional development, things of that nature, um, textbooks purchased at the beginning of the year. Um, but we do have a few areas where we're seeing, um, some overages that we need to, to, um, to be cognizant, having, uh, technology is one area. We had a um, change in, uh, directors in the technology department. And we will have to transfer from reserve, which is the, the contingency money that I was speaking of earlier. About thirteen thousand, um, where we purchased an inventory labeling system to improve our inventory. Um, um, system licensing, tracking, software and file, well, software. Those are all new purchases unbudgeted that are, are needed and were deemed to need it after discussing with the technology director. So, um, we didn't move forward with those. And the administration lines are liability insurance. There was a premium increase in FY twenty-two, so it was under budgeted by three thousand seventy-five dollars. Um, I was unaware a bunch of time that this was going to occur. They came in after the budget was actually voted at town meeting with new, new rates. But the good news is we have some funding and unemployment that we can transfer to cover up. So that'll be taken care of. Um, in operations and maintenance, last year we had high heating costs. There was some concern about air quality, so just because not of the building, but because of the pandemic that we found ourselves in the middle of. And so windows were opened and, um, there was a lot of heat that was used that was higher than previous years. We averaged about sixty to sixty-five thousand at O N H S. Last year, we were at seventy-five thousand. So, um, and at Morris, it's closer to forty, and we were just a little above that amount last year. So the reason that you see when we look at this, this complete spreadsheet, the, um, percentages are a little out of whack. It's because we encumbered higher than once. And we'll adjust those as we get through the heating days that occurred during the year, we'll be able to see if we overshadow it and we can reduce those encumbrances and put us back into run. And that moment, we'll then go back into the, the funds available.
On the face of it, though, because of the ventilation stuff we did last year, it's, it seems like we may have a new, normal, higher amount than the sixty average, maybe. I mean, I, you know, because of the the opening, some things that we closed for.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the, um, HVAC systems, the, the times that they start and end have been adjusted. So it's a longer period of time and that's part of it as well.
Right.
That's why we a highly enough that was typical in past, in the past five. That's the operating side of things. And we did have some special revenues in there, um, that helped to offset the um, the operating budget, brings a down from that budget. So we have other programs, food services is one. um the operating budget, brings a down from that budget. So we have other programs, food services is one, and the start of the year fund balance for food service was seventy five thousand for that one. Our revenue today is a hundred and nine thousand, our expenditure is a hundred and ten thousand, leaving a current fund balance of seventy four thousand. So we're not eating into that fund balance. Um, and what this tells me is our revenue is a little bit lower than our expenditures, but we're not seeing a a big deficit being created, and that's a good thing. Athletics, we started the this year at fifty one thousand one fourteen. We've received in twenty thousand. Only one season so far has occurred, the fall season. For gate receipts and user fees, twenty thousand six fifty one. Our expenditures to date have been sixteen thousand, leaving a fund balance of about fifty five. So again, the same story as food service. We're not seeing the deficit being created with less revenue than expenses.
Is the revenue for the athletics, is that also the fees that students pay to participate?
Yes, any of the revenue includes gate receipts, one student fees. I'm paying tuition. We started the year at a thousand. We've received them to date twenty three eight. We've only expended five hundred and forty eight out of that account. Typically, it's used for supplies and some salaries, and that's a journal entry when I, when I, we get further through the year, we may apply some of the salaries. I think we budgeted thirty thousand out of this account to offset salaries. Um, and so that has a fund balance right now of seventy four thousand. So take that thirty thousand off your salaries, you're at forty four thousand still. Not a big deficit from the beginning of start of year. Tuition, um, this is non-choice tuition and non-pre-K tuition, so um any student that attends our district, typically it's mostly the agreement we have with Richmond for tuition students. Um, that has a starting balance of one thirty three. We just built Richmond for the first half of the year. And that is um the bill, the invoice was about forty seven thousand, so that'll be added to that, but we're also creating and using sixty thousand this year in this year's budget. So we'll have that come off as well. So we'll receive in about a hundred thousand. Sixty thousand will be spent um offsetting expenditures. And school choice, we started the year with one point seven one one million. We've received to date six hundred and fifty three thousand. That's five months of school choice revenue. You receive that monthly. And that is adjusted during the course of the year, suggested um after December numbers. Um, and so we may see more or less, once we hit January's um revenue, monthly revenue from school choice, but um typically it'll be around this, I think it's one hundred and thirty thousand in some change that we receive monthly. So it'll be in that ballpark, more or less. Expenditures to date, and this is for salaries um in the operating budget, seven hundred and ten thousand. So our current fund balance with all that taken into account is one million, literally one million. So that's where we stand with the twenty one, twenty two budget. It's actually in pretty good shape. Um, and I think that I can answer any questions that you have, if you have any at this point. I'll try to answer them.
Well, listen, for the non-accountants in the audience, when you say a journal entry, can you just tell us what that means?
Yes. So a journal entry is um typically you hang out of this account, but you have this money there marked, then you just move the expense from this account to that. That's why I'm saying that's a journal entry. But it's an accounting entry to move the expense from your account to.
Yeah, and typically, I think unless it's a dramatic amount of money, you, you just make those adjustments and let us know about them. And I imagine there's times when you might need a vote to move a larger amount of money if we were creating a new position, or if we were doing something that was dramatic. But if it's a, a lot of these adjustments to make sure that this, you know, that we can pay from the appropriate account, you just do and let us know about, just as you're doing tonight.
Um, yes. So um we went into, we asked ask for a transfer from on how that was to the operating of expenditures. So that was a large transfer.
Right.
School.
Yep.
And the, the town has four buckets of money. They have personnel services, supplies. Um, but there's three or four buckets, and if we have, say as the whole, five thousand if mine is on work in the school budget and over in weather, as long as your total is under a high threshold, it really isn't a transfer that needs to be done. Because we are under the budgeting amount that we were So the, you look at that too, and some of the, you know, some of the ones where we end the school year and maybe as a goal, it cannot be negative, but um why maybe they're not. Yes, um, so at the, on the budget, this spreadsheet, you see budget with transfers that are you'll see some increases from the adopted budget, the re-adopted budget, because we've done that already. Contingency, there, there are still some that will need to come from there, but if I wait and see how other accounts being there during the year and maybe it's coming from somewhere. So that's why we're not. Yes, um, I'd like to save for unanticipated expenses that could range from, you know, transportation, a shoe, a student, education, things like that that we so. The twenty two, twenty three?
Well, so you're showing right there. So, point on some O N H S budget.
That, that's not as easy to answer as you would think. Because of the, the difference start times for so chronologically, we, this report was creating them numbers from December third. So July one was the start of the new year, December third is the end. This report is created. So you're looking at July always up to the left of five months. Because it's only a few weeks since December. So I would say five months through, but three months of salaries for school year.
So for our schools, we're about a third of the way in, right? So we're and, and it looks like from the cash flow analysis that we're about a third of the way expended on school.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. This program, I heard down to see we spent fifty six percent of that sixty percent, well, sixty four percent straight at one thirty percent for school, so.
Because that started on July first, so we're like almost like half, or five months in or almost six months in, so that clock is set as, started at a different time.
Yes.
And then the other piece, it's a little bit not always like easiest to see, because it's going to want to get about the, some of these are also encumbrances, right? So there, we have monies that were promised and paid, things that we know are reasonably anticipated. So
Yes.
it's not always straight expenses, but it's also maybe some promised future expenditures.
Yeah, and so you see the schools start in September, they, old schools are around thirty, thirty percent. Administration and our leadership parents are higher because that staff is off from July one. So there's two months where there are expenditures that aren't necessarily in the schools because of the timing of employees we pay. So our employees that are paid through the summer are paid on the budget from a previous year. So that come in, the teachers that come in professionals. Their first paycheck of this new year budget is in September.
I, I just would like to say, I really appreciate a lot of effort I don't make these spreadsheets. I mean, spreadsheets are great, but the PowerPoint summary is really helpful with people like me who connect this. If it's there, they correlate, but it's, this is really helpful.
Yeah, we really think it's important to try to, to do this as frequently as possible, to be transparent with the budget, to help folks understand where the tax dollars are going um in easy to digest ways, right? So I've been really clear in discussions with Melissa that I don't want to just be putting up spreadsheets and telling people, hey, go click on the website, it's all there on the spreadsheet. It doesn't land the same way, right? So we want people to be able to really get their arms around the budget and understand it um in the best ways that we know how. And if we can do it better, we'd love to hear, you know, feedback and suggestions, but um, you know, we're committed to transparency and communication around finances, both for the current year and then as we build the next year's budget as well.
And at the same time, I also appreciate that the budget is, it needs to be and is facile enough and needs to be moved around. For example, when you're saying, well, we, we have a substitute here and we have this, so that not everybody that sees it needs to be like, oh, my goodness, we're over budget on this. Really, you have to, yes, you can have the quickest number summary, you can have the snapshot right now. If you also have a certain amount of understanding and trust that there is a process here. And so I appreciate that both can be happy to say that if somebody has a specific question, they can ask that, but it does get to a point where you're like, yeah, because of the end, we, we compensate where we need to, to make it work. And that's also important.
And I appreciate you, and I know it's not always easy jumping back and forth because you're kind of like living two budgets, right? So like, um, half of Melissa's day is spent working in.
The auditor was here for FY twenty.
Yeah.
For FY twenty?
Um, yeah, the, um, it's called a single audit. When your grant revenues exceed certain thresholds, you're audited. So um they came into audit the cares for the town and the school.
And our inventory um system expenditure paid off today already because I'm able to quickly tell them all of our Chromebooks, where they came from, how much they cost.
Who has them?
Yeah, and who has them, which is an improvement that wasn't in place um last year before we went to that asset tagging system, so. That was helpful today.
Hello, how do you think so? Uh, every year, the auditors come in um for the town. We usually hear, um, I think they were here about a month ago, and they pulled some school files and look at payroll and look at expenditures. This was for the grant funding in particular. And then um, so that's two this year. And then in the spring, late spring, they'll audit the end of year report that was submitted to the state that details all of our expenditures and what we spent, every piece of revenue, every piece of money on.
And that's done onsite? They're here?
Yes.
Physically?
They come here, yes.
And title one usually is a three-year audit as well, unless they're suspicious and they might do it more frequently. Um, and then the other one that um we also face is special education audit. That's usually every five weeks. All right, so the, any other questions from Melissa? All right, the next item on the report is just a um winter sports update. So this week, basketball starts for boys and girls. Um, M I double A has a um been working with athletic directors from around the state to talk about how to allow winter sports to um be conducted in a way that's safe. And so indoor masking is required for all athletes, referees, officials, scorekeepers, media, press, fans, um so literally anybody indoors um must be mastering winter sports. There's currently no capacity limits in any of the facilities that's externally imposed. The only one that I know that's um deviated from that is Mike Graylock has imposed their own um standard that's more restrictive than the state. Um, but we have not um felt that we wanted to ask the, the committee to think about that at this point. Um, we did um underscore, though, for our neighbors, uh, that we are expecting all folks to adhere to the indoor masking um and that um that will be, you know, vigorously enforced in Lennox because it's the right thing to do. We want to lead by example um and hold ourselves to the highest standard that um we do follow the rules and do what's right. So um that's winter sports. Again, we're lucky in the, in the sense that we don't have too many indoor sports for winter. You know, there's some schools where, you know, they have a big wrestling program or those kinds of things. So um basketball tends to be our big ones. Um, and then we have, the rest of them are, are typically outdoor or some outdoor sports, I guess, for the winter, um and skiing and those types of sports. But winter sports have started, so we're excited about that. Um.
Can Mark?
Yeah.
The M I A guidelines covering just games or practices at all?
So all
Practice.
games and practices, indoor events.
So anytime the teams that are part of M I A are doing anything there.
Yeah, as long as it's on school ground, then it's related to that sport. So like if the basketball team had a spaghetti dinner at somebody's house, then no, like that's different. But
And when I see the pictures in the eagle of all the kids playing basketball with their masks like this, what is that?
So that is not following the M I A's guidance. Their guidance is that the mask should be worn over your mouth, in your nose. Uh, and so they should not be pulled down like that during the games. So hopefully we don't see pictures like that in the eagle, but um if you're doing this Lennox kids, you know, certainly make sure that we address it, but um, you know, we, we do want to make sure that um that we're holding ourselves accountable and also our, our visitors too. And so um, you know, we want to have people come and want, we want them to enjoy, you know, high school game. I love high school basketball, you know, it's one of my favorite things. I was involved with it for years and years, and I think it's, it's fantastic. It's a great way for a school community to come together and show school support, but um we want our visiting teams to come and be just as vigorous in that, but we want to make sure that we can do it in a way that's safe and we can continue to do it. We don't have to go back to games and no fans and these kinds of things. So um, you know, we're hopeful that if we follow um our mitigation strategies, we'll be in a good spot. I think we've seen, I think, pretty good evidence that when people follow our mitigation strategies, we've been able to I think, do better than just about everyone else in the state in terms of containing the spread of COVID in our schools. Um, there's a reporter from Harvard, um or uh, someone who works for Harvard University's Public Health Division who just um released some information they was studying from across the state, uh, it was in the Boston Globe. If it's not today, it's going to be there tomorrow. Um, with all the information, all the schools across the Commonwealth, you'll see that um Lennox is definitely in the um small and enviable um collection of schools that have, you know, low incidence and um low incidence per one hundred thousand. So certainly I can just say, oh, Lennox is small, it's definitely has more numbers. Our incidences are also low too. So um, again, credit to our kids, to our staff for um doing, you know, they don't always get it a hundred percent right. I mean, we're in a human system after all, but they do a pretty good job day to day. When I'm in schools, I see kids and staff on our policy, so they go pretty pleased overall. And then the last um item on the superintendent report is the submission for the committee's review of superintendent goals. Um, so part of this, of the new superintendent induction program, uh, we've worked to put together goals. And so um I've been working with my coach to um give some feedback throughout this process of putting these goals together that um I can connect to both our strategic plan and also um the entry plan um that I put together. So there's four goals, and you generally recommend three to five goals. So uh, the first goal is planning for an effective entry uh in direction setting. And then I step out um three different actions and deliverables along the way, and also benchmarks um on the progress toward that goal. So for that particular goal, um, it's that the presentations that are laid out are um delivered on on schedule and the strategy development process is launched. And so in one of our recent meetings, we actually did talk about some of that strategy piece um to the hundred day plans and then making plans um based on those. Um, the second goal is maintaining momentum during the transition. Uh, this was one that was really important to me. Um, I know that turning over ownership is trying enough during a pandemic is a even more of a, of a lift, but it was really important to maintain momentum. And so we want to make sure that we had schools um open and operating and it was really important to maintain momentum. And so we want to make sure that we had schools open and operating and doing things that are grateful for students. So again, I stepped out key actions there. And then making sure we're hitting the benchmarks for our teacher evaluations. We've been meeting with our administrative staff to let them know what the expectations are for that, gauging their progress toward those things. Brenda was literally doing that today when I went over to visit her at Morris. So she's well underway, I know, toward her evaluation plans and it seems we're in high school. School visits and instructional rounds. We actually had instructional rounds last week at the high school. And then we have it at Morris tomorrow where we go and we visit classrooms and observe teaching and learning. We set a focus area. So tomorrow is going to be on student engagement, talk about what that means, what that might look like, what it may not look like. And then go out in the field, collect evidence, and then we come back and we talk about the evidence that we collected. It's not evaluative. It doesn't single out any teachers per se, but it's really used for our school leaders to get a quick pulse on their school with some outside feedback and then also turn around and use that information and data with their staff to further their development and refine their focus areas. So we're excited about that. The first one was was great. And we had all of our leadership team come on the rounds. In the future, we'd like to turn that over to teachers themselves so that they're joining in the process too. And I think that's where the power really starts to come into that practice. And then analysis of some of the evaluative reports. We want all of our administrative and teaching staff to be at eighty percent efficient or proficient in meeting their goals. And so that's one of the outcomes that we're shooting for. And then also, today was part of this, publishing the budget timeline as well as a budget book for next year that's comprehensive and easily understood by our community. The third goal is to complete the actual induction program itself, which is already well underway. And in some of the benchmarks to toward that are evidence in the calendar that it's ongoing, that we've been attending these verification from NISIP that have been actively engaged in program, which I'm sure that they would certainly give that feedback. And also submitting paperwork that would advance my superintendent license from initial to professional. So you have, the way you do that is by going through this superintendent induction program. And that's how you move to the next stage of your superintendent license. So I am definitely finding it a good program. I think it's been great to to touch base with folks on the state, learn from one another. And I think share ideas and support. And it's been, I think, really beneficial for some folks. I guess some of the great things are happening in Lennox. I think that you know, sometimes we tend to have a more like Boston centric focus. And I think that they've been pleasantly surprised with some of the great things that are happening out here in the western part of the state as well. And so I think that it's been a good program in terms of helping me think about my entry in a really intentional way too. So I think like the entry planning and the feedback on that and setting the goals, I think has been been helpful. And the conversations with the coach have been really helpful. In fact, he's going to come out and join us tomorrow on the rounds and join that. So.
Is your group and superintendent from across the state, if you have a small group of that?
Yeah. So we have, we have both, right? So there's a large cohort of all of us who are starting this year. Then they also then break it down into smaller cohorts by region. So there's a region of us or a group of us that are from this region. And then there's also sometimes we break up other formations too that maybe are similar sized districts or have similar types of districts, you know, so like all the urban schools might get together for some issues that are more germane to urban school leadership. So it's really nice being, how it's tailored and responsive to some of those unique challenges that you would have in different contexts, because the things that maybe we're wrestling with in the Berkshires is very different from what someone might be wrestling with, you know, in Braytree. So that's been helpful.
Do you have, are there any other new superintendents in Berkshire County?
So in Berkshire County, yes, there's one in the southern end of the district. Southern Berkshire County district.
Not there.
What's that?
Not ever.
Southern Berkshire. I'd have to look at my, I can't remember exactly which district, but it's one of the ones south of us. And then there's a few that are nearby in Pioneer Valley, Granby. But that, so there's a few that are this way, but not too, too many. We tend to have, I think, a more experienced group of administrators kind of moved around within the Berkshires, but not a lot of overall newbies in Berkshire County. And then the last goal is one that we talked about, but even about tonight as well, and it's the safe reopening and maintenance of schools post-COVID. And so some of those benchmarks are COVID protocols and testing program being implemented, the fidelity, I think that's going along swimmingly. So again, thank you for the support on the test and stay program and the COVID screening protocols. I think that stuff allowed us, I think, to be as safe and healthy as we are in the participation rate we have, I think most people be envious of. So we're really fortunate in that way. And I was telling, I think it was Amy and Melissa, I think that's one of the things that our review, Brenda, that Massachusetts really got right by allowing students to be able to stay in schools when I read about places around the country where they have massive numbers of kids who are in the quarantine. So it's highly disruptive. So I think the test and stay policy has been a real, I think, saving grace for us as we return to schools this year. Other benchmarks under goal four are keeping students in school connected. Keeping kids in school and then connected to school. So that's some of that, you know, really, I think, working on the culture and climate stuff that we've talked about. We've been able to keep, I think, kids in school. Our commitment rates are very high, much higher than you'd ever expect during a pandemic. And we have heard that, you know, kids are excited generally to be back in school, which is also encouraging, but also kind of strange. At the same time, I've never heard kids say like, you know, we really need to go back to school. A lot of the jokes used to be about how much, you know, teenagers didn't want to be in school and they wanted to cut class and all these things. But you know, our kids are really excited to be back and back engaged with their friends, their teachers and sports and the arts. So that's been wonderful for us. To work with the school committee to periodically review appropriate measures that are in place. And again, we put some policies in place early on. And we also have the JLMC as an ongoing mechanism for reviewing those measures and either refining or changing or adding new ones as we go. And then holding vaccination clinics. And we've had a few of those. We had vaccine clinics for our students to get vaccinated, our elementary age students. And we had over thirty-five kids participate in that, which is great. Plus, we've also had a bunch that got vaccinated through their primary care physicians for that as well. And then we also had a booster clinic for our faculty and staff so that folks get their boosters on one of our half days. And so again, that was, I think, another great opportunity for us to keep our folks safe and healthy, right on their own site. They didn't have to go anywhere. They didn't have to make appointments. It was really easy. And so that was really well attended. And also we got really good feedback from folks, you know, who are grateful that we can offer that. So it was really amazing. They pulled up in an RV that like had been making big on the inside to be this little mobile health clinic. And I got my booster there and they did a great job. And it was, I actually got that and my booster shot all at the same time. And it was awesome. So those are my goals for the year. Again, these are for the committee's consideration. You can certainly change or modify them if you deem appropriate, but those are the ones that I worked up. And I think they put us in a pretty good place for for year one as we go through this transition process.
Mark or Brenda, can you speak to whether or not we're currently tracking the vaccination status of more students?
Sure.
Yes, we, we are. As of this afternoon at four o'clock, we have forty-nine families or students who have submitted their vaccine.
So you're asking parents to submit?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Two weeks in a row in the family newsletter and I will continue.
Yep.
Collecting that information. Scan it right into your show.
Okay.
Or send me a copy.
Okay. And fully vaccinated students are exempt from the test and state program, correct?
So if a student, so let's say there was a student who was positive for COVID and we do close contact and there's a, is a genetic student who is fully vaccinated, then they do not need to be tested or quarantined. No, okay.
But what you're saying is forty-nine families have sent?
Forty-nine students.
Students.
Right. Because there's, you know, families with more than one student. So forty-nine students.
Yeah. So you know of forty-nine, we anticipate there's probably a whole lot more than that, but they just haven't sent paperwork.
And that's Monday is the second dose of the, for the families who came to Morris for their first vaccine shot. You know, it's Monday, the twentieth? Yep, Monday, the twentieth.
Good, good. And do we have a sense of how, what percentages look like at the high school?
So Jen Dries had that. And I know that the percentage was up around eighty percent at the the last count. So you can check in with her and get an updated number and do that to you.
Okay. So you're all set with your report? Well, thank you. Okay. So now we're subcommittees in the strategic plan sections and governance and leadership. I don't know if we've had a meeting since our last time. I know we've had a meeting, but I don't remember whether it was, we had a meeting.
But the major update is that we was also that we do want to move forward with working with MASC for policy review. And so this is something that we had talked about actually before the pandemic. And we determined we'd actually hopefully get that kind of voted in support of starting this. And so now at the time it got paused, it's a pandemic now, we're back on schedule and the need still exists. We want move forward. This will involve collecting all of our policies, contracts and lots of documents from the district, sending them off to MASC where they have representatives who will do a comprehensive review of all of that compared against standard, you know, up to date policies and then come circle back to us over a period of time with newer, more, more updated policies and filling gaps, bring us, you know, up to standard where we may not be. And so this effort is big and probably will be time consuming. I think they estimated that at the short end, it takes something like six, eight months and a long end, a couple of years. But we think that it'll be well worth it in terms of the investment of time and funds. So just sort of made those, we will start that process and move forward.
And the cost is around ten thousand. You pay like three thousand upfront, then another three thousand dollar payment midway through the project and then three thousand when they wrap the project.
Yeah. Yeah. And we had voted to do this a few years ago, which is we put it on hold when we weren't in school. Human resources, you know, we meet frequently because we're meeting with the teachers and doing negotiations. We also have had some meetings where we've been discussing negotiation strategies. So teaching, learning and culture.
So.
However, you want to.
So we did meet again, as we just, as I said earlier, we talked about changing the way we're doing this. And we had a number of questions and we fortunately also had Mark at this meeting and we had Mike and we had Brenda, we had the administration, building administration there as well. And that was helpful because there were just questions that had come up about how will we handle some areas such as, you know, time for students to have support and how are we giving them curriculum support and how are we dealing with access to food and just a lot of things that we just need to get a better sense of how that was working because a lot of changes have been made through COVID. So we had a great opportunity to really get some questions answered. And because some fit under each category, that's what ultimately made us realize that these these two committees are just kind of a little bit, this doesn't make sense. So we said, well, let's just make them one. So that was great. And we talked particularly about when it comes to one of the policies of having what we're supposed to have as a student, a student advisory council. And I spoke with Mike and we're going to, I'm going to just take the lead on just meeting with him to try to pull together. What do we currently have as far as student representation? And how do we shift that? And how are we going to put that into place so that we can create a policy in a draft form, review it at the committee level and then bring it to the full, the full school committee? So that's one of our agenda items. And the next time we meet as a combined committee, which will be January twelfth, I think we'll talk about some other agenda items. We also talked about diversity, equity, inclusion in the general sense, because there's so many different things that go into that. And thinking about which aspects of that are we going to tackle with any type of training, professional development, further retreats with the school committee around training. And then Mark and I met to talk just a little bit about vendors and how we might create a plan because we had some different ideas after we going to the MASC meeting and hearing presentations from a number of organizations that do this work is to think about how do we create a multi-year plan? Because it interfaces with staff training and interfaces with our work together. Either whether it's on retreats or other issues that we're facing. So that's kind of what we tackled, just talking about different issues that we're going to approach, deciding to collapse into one committee. Really thinking that those are the things that interface with each other. Because it's really all about the experience, right? It's families, the students, the faculty within learning, teaching and culture. So it makes sense to be under one call. So that's it. We meet again on January eleventh.
Very good. Yeah, finance, Matt, we, we talked fairly extensively about the capital budget. And what, you know, what things we have, you know, on the horizon there. And then kind of dovetailing with the school building committee. We're, we're wrestling with, at the school building committee, we're wrestling with creating a a bunch of buckets, you know, kind of in short term, need to be done. Longer term, we need, we would likely need MSBA support. And things that, some of those categories would be environmental safety, personal safety. The academic spaces. You know, there are a number of buckets that I've, actually I have a, I have somewhere on my computer. You know, some of the buckets I've created, physical, personal safety, space considerations, exterior concerns, classroom improvements, and then other things within the building, perhaps bathrooms and locker rooms and stuff like that. So we're, you know, we're wrestling with, you know, what are we going to do? What are we going to prepare for a long-term presentation to the MSBA? But what can we use capital funds for to do improvements that even though they might end up being something that we have to do a more bigger deal on down the road that we need to get fixed? You know, for ADA compliance for just to make the building, you know, work for the people who are in there now in the short term before, because we have no clue whether we'll ever get funding from MSBA or when we'll get funding from MSBA. So we need to continue to use capital money to make appropriate improvements along the way. So Melissa, you know, and, and, you know, Chris Keston is on the school building committee. So we've had these discussions and you know, and there's certainly an understanding from the town side as well as our side that this is certain. There are some things that are very important to do really soon. And and then some things that we may do as a stopgap prior to something bigger happening down the road. And, and again, very unknown because we're, we're just in the very early stages with the school building committee of what our proposal to the state will be or what our, you know, what our recommendation to the town will be for you know, what our next steps are. There are several steps that will have to take place where we will have to go to the town and ask for their support. And it's just, the scope is unclear to us at this point, but we know there are some short-term things that we need to use our annual capital money for. And that's what we're trying to wrestle with. And was there anything else we talked about at the finance that, you know? So that kind of covers all of our subcommittees. And anybody else have anything for the good of the order? This is our final meeting until January. This is our final meeting until January, so happy holidays to everybody. And family will be returning from various places. For some people, some family is here all the time, but it's it's good. It's a good opportunity to reconnect with loved ones. Hopefully spend some time with, now that we're vaccinated with broader family. I mean, that may have happened at Thanksgiving, but it might happen more robustly at Christmas time, so. Enjoy that. And, you know, I want to thank our, once again, our police people for coming tonight and our, and I think this whole comfort dog thing is a very intriguing, you know, having seen Mark's dog here one day. Such an amazing delightful dog, and only what, four months old?
Yeah.
I mean, unbelievable how comforting that dog was. You know? And it owned the office.
Yes, it changed the environment.
It, it was unbelievable. You just have to see Mark's dog sometimes. We appreciate do appreciate it. But anyway, so in order that we can all get home and have supper, maybe. I didn't say a motion to adjourn. No debate? All in favor? We are adjourned.